We'll begin our meeting with reading the Delmar College Vision Statement. Delmar College will be the premier choice for life-changing educational opportunities provided by responsive, innovative faculty and staff who empower students to improve local and global communities. Thank you. Delmar College is streaming live audio and video from the Official Board of Regents meetings on the college's website in real time with the exception of portions of the meeting considered as closed session by statute. Given the events of the last week and directions from our president and our governor and local mayor and county judge, we are going to be limiting our agenda today to those what we think are going to be relatively quick and/or urgent matters. So given that, we have eliminated the staff and student recognitions for today and we will postpone those to our next meeting agenda as soon as we can. We will have general public comment at this time and then throughout the rest of the agenda, we'll be skipping over a number of things. But if there's anyone who would like to provide general public comment, you may please do so at this time.
This is Jack Gordy in 4118 Bray Drive. And the reason I'm here, they passed out some papers for you. On page four, it will show and prove that I've been saying for about 10 years that Delmar has been, I know for 10 years, violating state law. And they knew they were violating state law. I don't know if they're still continuing it, but the state representative, Mr. Hunter, come down here and had a meeting with Delmar and then they had the public information organization was in on the meeting. And when somebody turned in a request for public information, they kept being told and I kept being told, "We got 10 days to answer it." Well, state law, and I kept telling them, "You're violating state law." State law says if it's available, they have to give it to you the same day you requested. And if they have to look it up and make copies, they have to give it to you the next day. They got 10 days to write the Attorney General. They knew they were violating state law, but it's obvious they do not care. And this Board of Regents needs to take action about Delmar not caring and continuing to violate, if they're still continuing to violate the law. Somebody needs to stop it. Okay? And I keep saying about the, what they're paying the outside attorneys. Well, in the month of February, they paid outside attorneys $20,115 for outside attorneys. This Board of Regents needs to ask why. And I'll keep saying that over and over and over. Why we're paying that much to outside attorneys when we're supposed to have a college attorney? But some of this stuff that they're doing for outside attorneys, anybody with one year of college, of attorney, college would be able to do it. If he can't do it, hire another attorney. Get rid of him. Because it should be done by the college attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Gordy. Any other public comment? Seeing none, we will move on. We are going to eliminate our general staff's reports today and we'll hear about the Flowerboth Viking Academy at a future meeting. And Dr. Eskamia is going to provide us his president's report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Regents and to the greater community, I've got a few things I want to cover today regarding the COVID-19 virus, otherwise known as the coronavirus, and how Delmar College is responding and has been responding for well over a week now. I want to thank you all for your patience to this point, to all employees, to our students, and to our community members. These are extraordinary times and we're taking extraordinary measures to get through what has transpired so far and what is, what is yet to transpire. I have invoked all emergency protocols. They're all in place to support the college and the community and the students who are currently enrolled. What our greatest obligation right now is, is with our current students who are enrolled and trying to get them through, taking care of our employees and our safety, the safety of these individuals. These, these protocols are put in place for procurement, for delivery of instruction, for all the necessary things that need to be done within the greater boundaries of the law to execute and, and protect all involved. I've been in contact with, I've been watching the federal government, have been in direct contact with the governor's office, the county judge's office, and of course, the mayor's office, as we've been communicating and receiving all the information. Everyone's safety and health, again, is first and foremost. It continues to be our priority and there's been much that's been happening to protect all those who have, who are involved with the college. We, all of our employees that are actively leading the college's initiatives on campus are being supported fully. We're watching, and by that, we mean that there's been large-scale, broad-scale cleansing and scrubbing of the campus, disinfecting of the campus repeatedly for those places that the minimal staff that are onboard are touching and using, primarily offices, individual offices where people will reside while they're on campus. Some employees are being asked to work from home, and that's a large number. And we're asked that they remain at home, telecommute through, through office computers, computers provided for the, by the college and/or their home computers. They are supporting from, this telecommuting is something that's readily done, has been done by most of our employees and we continue to maximize that opportunity. For those who are feeling ill, we've let them know not to come to work and not even to support the college from work, from home, excuse me, if they're feeling too ill to do so. But there are some who are, are at home and they're determined to be behind that computer and assist anyway. We know there are exceptions to everything, and so we continue to watch them closely. For those who have traveled abroad in areas of high incidence of exposure, we're being, they're being asked to also remain at home and seek the appropriate medical advice from, from their medical provider and to heed all, all warnings until, until properly cleared. Communication has been established for well over a week now. Ms. Lorette Williams is, is our Director of Community and College Relations, has been nonstop at it facilitating the college-wide communications. And I know just about everybody in here has, in this room, and certainly around the college community, have received extensive messaging as to what we know and what we're doing at this point. And again, I want to emphasize, at this point, we are doing everything we possibly can. Again, extensive disinfecting and I want to thank our facilities team for all that they're doing, both our custodial and, and our, and our staff members, our Delmar staff members who are out there working tirelessly to make sure that this place is, is protected. We want to thank them for that. So in addition to the things that I've mentioned, some of the things that we've done so far is, first and foremost, last week was extend spring break up until next, this coming Monday, March 23rd. We fully expect that that will be extended here in the coming days. I don't know if it's going to be four, three, four, five, six, seven, or eight weeks until we can get back to normalcy or some semblance of normalcy, but that decision will be made as soon as possible. I'm thinking in coming hours. Okay, 48 hours, maybe a day or two, but, but it could happen very soon. I'm waiting to get the information from the governor's office and then through the county judge to make that determination. All instructional support areas remain active and engaged. Yesterday, at the Richardson Performance Hall, all directors, department chairs, deans, executive team members, and a few others met to discuss all the things that have been done to date, what all the protocols are, safety protocols are, and all the things that we can do to make sure that, that are, that we are protected, the students are protected, and then that the assets are protected, including instruction. Much, as you know, and I'm going to speak to the curriculum, and this is the, the $65,000 question, is how much of the instruction is online and how much will proceed? Well, as you know, as you may recall, there's been, there is always a significant portion of our curriculum that is being taught online. It's about 20, 20-something percent, 25, 26 percent, maybe a little bit more depending on the semester. Well, we've begun to move as much of the instruction as possible to an online scenario. I will get my first full report tomorrow morning at our briefing at 8:30 in the morning to, to see how that transition will take place. Anything that is being done in midstream, as you know, is difficult, at least. And, and then there's another part of the story. There's, there are those types of, of programs that are skills-based that simply cannot be fully brought online. I promise you, it's extremely hard to weld online, for example. It is hard to take someone's pulse online. All of those sorts of examples, you get my point. We are different, and I know that the universities are out there and they're moving. We are, we too are moving in that direction to the degree that we can. There are going to be some exceptions and that's going to be rolled out in a full explanation here in coming days and I think even coming weeks. Events through the end of April are being rescheduled. Okay, there's lots of things, lots of special events on the calendar through the month of April. And again, we're not canceling them per se. We're rescheduling with the idea that we can bring them back. If for some reason they can't be rescheduled, we will cross that bridge when we get to it. Right now, things are being rescheduled. So my role, if I may kind of conclude and, and then just kind of open it up to questions, my role is to make sure that we have, we have come together as a college, and we have, all components, all aspects of the college, instructional and support are engaged. Many, many people are working from their offices or from their offices at home, and that's okay. We've been encouraged by the governor's office. I've been in, again, direct contact with the governor's office. We're being encouraged to be as flexible as we possibly can. And so, again, it's going to be an hour-by-hour kind of situation. Stand by. I will be reaching back out to everyone and we are monitoring everything from safety, security to, to the things locally, to everything, and tying it to what's going on at the state without, I think, without much sleep for sure, but most of all, without any interruption in communication. We do enjoy great communication from our, from our governmental leaders. I'm going to open it up to questions right now and, just whatever questions you may have, anybody in the audience included, but Regents.
What about students that, I know there's not too many, but that may not have internet access or devices or laptops or?
We are, we, no, we do have, we are working on that. We started working on that last, last week. Over 100 computers were, were prepared for loan. We think we have upwards of 300 computers. We're going to, we're going to message that broadly here. Lorette and I were just talking about it right before the meeting on how we're messaging that, but IT staff is, is busily working for those students who, who may benefit from a lone, a loner laptop or even a full-standing PC. We'll have both. There is discussion, depending on the news, depending on how restrictive the news that is coming from, from our, from our governor's office and this county judge's office. Like other colleges and universities, certain labs are being opened for restrictions, with restrictions. I will find out more about how good an idea that is tomorrow morning and how we can control those ideas. Because, because what has not stopped in the, in the way of instruction is dual credit, or excuse me, online instruction, purely online instruction. That, that has continued. In fact, yesterday, we just started a full new section, many sections, I think at least a few dozen sections of, of eight-week courses. So eight weeks started yesterday. We actually had a whole new session start yesterday. Those are being supported fully and we're going to continue to find creative ways within the, within the parameters we're given to, to provide them access to that so that they can complete. Again, let me just say, again, this is really, really important. Our obligation, our obligation right now for students are those who are currently enrolled. We're going to do everything we can to get them completed and/or graduated, through graduation at some point during whatever the definite, the endpoint of spring semester is.
My next question was, are all faculty members trained and are able to teach online?
So there are many, the short answer is no. There are many faculty that do not teach online and have not taught online. And so we're going to work with them to the degree that we can and get everybody up to speed. Their version of online may look very differently than, you know, those that are, that have been doing nothing but online for years and years and years. We do not want to, in any way, change that protocol, that face-to-face, traditional 16-week learning. That, that is something we hope to have and I expect to have as long as we're in existence. There, there will be challenges in, in the transition. We hope the transition is shorter for those, for those students and those faculty members and department chairs, but we're going to do everything we can to bridge the gap for all of our faculty members.
Dr. Eskamia, I think you've answered some of my questions.
Yes, ma'am.
But I want you to know that there is some anxiety out there amongst the students. I got a call yesterday from a student telling me, you know, what's going to happen because I know I can do my classes online, but what about the lab? I need to go to the lab. And I said, "I don't know. I don't know what to tell you, but perhaps we'll soon, we'll have an answer for you."
So, so the idea with extending spring break is supposed to alleviate that to some degree and it, but, and I know that it's not a, the only solution out there, or the big solution out there. We're moving as quickly as we can to put information in those faculties. We're in, in those divisions with those, with all our faculty to make sure we can communicate to those students with more clarity as soon as we possibly can. We're, the teams are working as we speak. I'm going to have some pre, I'm going to have some briefings this afternoon as to what our academic deans and department chairs are coming up with so that we can begin to push out that information for those students with those kind of questions as soon as possible. That being said, this is our opportunity to talk a little bit more about our communications that are out there. Our website, delmar.edu, has ample opportunity for questions. There's Q and A's out there, there's Q and A opportunities out there, there's emails out there, there is help desk informations that are continuing to work, help desk opportunities, excuse me, for, for students who are having technical difficulties. There is a COVID-19 ad, email, email address for, for, for questions and, and inquiries into anything, anything about the college. So any of those students who are experiencing anxiety, first of all, know that that's perfectly normal during these times and, and we totally respect that and, and we want to help you through that. So that you can complete, so that they can complete their goals here at the college. We encourage anyone who has any questions, both directly and indirectly, to reach out to the college. The teams are ready. We are ready to respond. Although there's very few people, very few staff members in here today and a couple of faculty members, I thought, maybe one or two. I don't know if he left. Yep. Is he back there? I'm sorry, Dr. Klein. There you go. Thank you for being here. There's, but I assure you that many, many are engaged in resolving those questions. As we always say, if there are questions, every one of those students should have their faculty contact, contact information. They should reach out to their faculty members first. If that doesn't resolve, if their anxiety or whatever the case may be, look to the website, send us their information, do whatever you can so that we can reach out to those students. And we will take, we will take every one of their situations one by one until we've talked to every one of them.
I have a question regarding that communication. Can students expect direct communication about their specific classes over their Delmar email address? So there would be direct communication?
Yep. We've, we've got several protocols and our, I, I think the one who can speak most eloquently about that is the designer of that, of that system, Ms. Lorette Williams. Yes, sir. No pressure.
Yes. Right now, the communication is that the students will be speaking directly to their instructors. So they'll be emailing via, we're driving them to the Delmar email addresses. Obviously, we are also utilizing some of the home email addresses that we have within our contact information. But the messaging that we're sending out is really getting them to go into the delmar.edu email address for the very latest information. And that way, they can then talk. The other option is in Canvas as well.
Okay.
There's ability for the instructor to speak to the student in Canvas.
So there's public messaging through social media, traditional media, our website.
Correct.
But student-specific communication, their best bet would be to use Canvas or their Delmar.edu at email address?
Correct. We have a lot of students that also utilize the Viking Go app.
Good.
And so we have pulled some data on that and we have gotten quite a few hits on that as well.
Good. Other questions from other Regents?
How do we do tutoring? Can we do tutoring online?
So, so we're, we're working on that plan to make sure that we can, on all aspects of our support services, whether it's tutoring or lab access, library access, and all those things are being discussed. And I'll have more answers after tomorrow. I'm sorry, I don't have that. I don't want to venture too far off, but I'll have a more firmer, firmer answer tomorrow and a report following.
Dr. Eskamia, one more question.
Yes, ma'am.
When a student has a question, is there an immediate response or do they have to wait an hour, two hours before they get an answer?
Good question. That's a fun one.
Right now, we are monitoring the COVID-19 pretty much during work hours. Actually, we were responding all the way up until 10 o'clock last night. So we've had about 68 emails that have come through at this point and we responded to every single one of them.
Thank you.
Well, I want to thank staff for working through spring break. I want to thank those faculty members who have worked through spring break and obviously have, have come back to campus yesterday or over the weekend from their own spring breaks and have jumped onboard. I know that this is just a tremendous amount of work, but it is important work and I want to thank you all for, for what you are doing. For those faculty members who may be listening online, thank you very much. This is going to be an incredible undertaking on behalf of our students and to get them through this spring semester. We know that you, you will have it under control. We know that your staff and our professional innovative faculty members, what's the phrase in our, in our mission statement? That we know that they will be responsive to our students and we are very much appreciative of all of that effort. It does not go unnoticed. Thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am.
Are there other things you want to say quickly in your president's report?
Well, I just have one introduction.
Okay.
If I may just tie it into, one introduction is Mr. John Streibas. He's joining us today. He's our vice president of facilities, physical facilities, and, and he has been front and center. He's still transitioning from San Antonio, moving, in that moving transition, and he has been here through spring break and available to be, he and Mr. Duffy in the back, Robert Duffy, as y'all know, have, they're, they're pros. They get what's going on and they are ahead of it. Every time I ask for something, they're, usually the answer is, "It's already done." And that's a great thing. But John, you just want to say a few words and we'll?
Glad to be here, settled in and been here every day and look forward to being here and making a difference.
He's very familiar to us because he's been our consultant for several years before, before he arrived as, as our new vice president. But I want to go into his background in further detail at another time as, as we, as we come up and, and as we get to know him, I want y'all to get to know him. We are truly blessed to have him as part of our team and thank you for everything you're doing, Mr. Streibas.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you and welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Very quickly, there are a couple of Regents reports that just wanted to check off very quickly. I attended the, in the National Legislative Summit that ACCT puts on in Washington DC in February. I provided both the National Green Sheet, which is blue in our packets, but it is the, the synopsis of the positions at the federal level that ACCT is taking on legislation. And then we also provided the Texas-centric version of those pieces that the Texas Association of Community Colleges and the Community College Association of Texas Trustees put together for that visit as well. So if there's any questions about that, we were able to meet. Natalie met with Representative Cloud's office along with our cohorts from Victoria College. At the same time, a small group of us were meeting with Senator Cornyn. And then we also had the opportunity to meet with staff for the House Education Labor Committee, Dr. Bobby Scott's staff person on higher education. So had some productive meetings while we were in DC. So I appreciate the opportunity to represent you while there. And then Dr. Nick Adami and I both attended the Spring Leadership Seminar that Kat put on in South Texas College in McAllen a few weeks ago, right before spring break, and heard a couple of really good presentations, one from Representative Oscar Martinez on, he is the Vice Chair of Appropriations at the House level and was very, very informative. And then also heard from the gentleman from the Texas Department of Information Resources, DIR, about cybersecurity efforts and what the state is, is available to do and help out. And August Alfonso, our Chief Information Officer, had heard from that same agency in a more technical manner at their, their state association meeting a few weeks prior, but this was very informative from a Regents standpoint, and we've got some information to share at a future point in time about that. Dr. Adami, anything you want to say about that?
No, excuse me. Other than that, the CT, I mean, the IT presentation was, was great, coming from a certified hacker, you know, and that was unique in descriptions and protections and what we need to do against ransomware. So, yeah, it was a very, very informative seminar.
The last piece is an FYI. We are intending to put together a presentation proposal for the ACCT Annual Congress in October in Chicago on Delmar College's workforce efforts and over the last 10-year period, the work that the board and staff have done on planning and resourcing and community partnerships around our workforce efforts and what that has yielded us, both in terms of partnership and collaboration agreements, but as well as students and contact hours and those kinds of things. Natalie is, is helping us pull that together. And so wanted you all to be informed of that, that we're intending to put that forward for, for the ACCT conference. Pending business, if you'll look on our pending business list, I am going to, later on the agenda, we're going to push off until April our annual ethics update, again, in lieu of time today. And so that will move to our April pending business. And then we'll also hear from our, our enrollment update at that time as well. In addition to, and this is again, assuming we have an in-person April meeting, there is a possibility, and the governor has given permission as of his executive order yesterday, there is a there is a, a opportunity for us to meet from video conference or teleconference if we determine that an in-person meeting in April would not be prudent. And if that's the case, then we will push off some of those, again, items that really, really require in-person discussion or not of, of emergency nature until a future meeting as well. So we're going to ask flexibility on those pending items for the next several months as we seek guidance and as situations either continue to escalate or hopefully resolve themselves over the next few weeks. Any questions on our pending business list? Seeing none, then we're going to move into our consent agenda. We have minutes from February 4th, both a workshop and regular meeting, acceptance of investment and financial reports for January, one for January, February, one for, for January 2020. Are there any items you would like pulled for separate consideration? Seeing none, is there a motion to adopt the consent agenda items?
I move to approve. Sure.
Mr. Rivas makes a motion. Ms. Estrada seconds that. Is there any public comment on our consent agenda items? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Those items pass unanimously. We will move on to our regular agenda item and about discussion and possible action related to recommendation for property insurance coverage. Dr. Escamilla, do you want to introduce that item?
Sure. Tammy, go ahead and come on up. So it's time for the college to review its property and windstorm insurance. And this is, this is extremely important business for the college as the timeliness of this is, is, is of the utmost importance and driving a lot of why we're meeting here today. But Ms. McDonald is here to discuss the outcomes of our most recent RFP, number 2020-05, and explain our outcomes.
Thank you. In part of your, in the board packet, you will see our cover memo for the meeting. So basic connection with the college's procurement of property and windstorm insurance, the college engaged Mr. Robert V. Rhine Company Insurance and Risk Management Consulting to assist the college with the RFP process and proposal analysis and results. The administration is seeking board action to approve staff recommendation for placement of property and windstorm insurance. Give you a little bit of background, our current property insurance will expire April the 30th, next month. The college current insurance agent is Boarded Insurance. On December the 14th, the college sent out bid invitations, they were emailed to six different companies or, or agents who had previously expressed interest. And we'll go through that timeline when we get to the presentation. Part of your packet, you will also see a letter from Mr. Rhine. He provided us with a letter on the property insurance renewal results, so you will see his results letter. And so we'll go ahead and move into the PowerPoint. And some of this is taken out of, of Mr. Rhine's results letter. And to give you a little bit of background on Mr. Rhine is we have used his services, the college has used his services since like the late 1990s. He, you know, insurance is like about every three to five years, we would go out for bid. So he has been involved some form or fashion in that process to help us with the procurement and analysis and the results since the late 1990s. And he does, he's very well respected and renowned throughout the state for his expertise in this particular area. And he does provide these types of services to many ISDs and community colleges throughout the state of Texas. Market conditions, Texas has seen significant losses in the past 24 months. We look at hurricanes, tornadoes, hail and flood. Coastal areas, we're in a coastal area. We have natural catastrophe exposed, so that makes us in a higher risk area. So there are limited insurers to insure the risk. That means that, that there are very few players in the market that actually want to provide coverage for the coast. Our insurance plays meant history. Delmar College follows the procurement process as established under the Education Code 44.031. So that's competitive bid process. In 2007, our insurance at the time was with HRH. That was Mr. Neal's former company. And at that time, we sent out an RFP. We had three companies that submitted proposals and Mr. Rhine was the consultant on that RFP process. And at that time in 2007, HRH retained the, the placement of the insurance. In 2010, we went out for procurement for competitive bids again for our property insurance. Two companies submitted proposals for the business. Mr. Rhine was our consultant in that process in 2010. And at ti, at that time, the college recommended and moved to Carlaw Insurance as the insurance company for the college. And in 2015, the, we sent out an RFP and we had two companies that submitted proposals. Mr. Rhine was our consultant. He consulted for that particular process. And at that time, the recommendations we've made, the board approved to place our insurance with Boarded Insurance, who is our current insurance carrier. The current insurance is Boarded. Current property insurance expires next, the end of next month, April 30th. Timelines and deadlines were established. What we did was we used this meeting on our calendar as far as when we had to push out information to those who were interested in proposals and we had to work backwards from this date. Bid invitation letters were mailed, emailed to six agencies slash companies on December the 14th. And December the 14th and December the 21st, it's required that we actually place ads in newspapers. So those ads were, were placed according to the, the guidelines that we do have to follow. On January the 2nd, the proposers, once the bid invitations went out, if a proposer was interested and wanting to provide us a proposal, they had a deadline of January 2nd to submit back to us. It was like an informational sheet, an informational sheet to say, we want to, to provide a proposal. And we had a response back from three agents, three companies. On January the 9th, insurance companies were assigned to agents and the RFP terms and conditions with a proposal submission deadline of 2:00 on February the 4th was sent out. And all of these deadlines and submissions were sent by Mr. Rhine. He handled this process. So all communication went through Mr. Rhine. When we assign insurance companies in the bid process and the invitation letter and the information that went out prior, it did let the insurance companies know that the current, the current insurance company would get their first choice of market because they're the incumbent. They're the ones who haven't insured already. So if that insurance company wanted to continue to use the current companies we already have insurance with right now, that would be their choice if they wanted to. That is, is standard practice. We did that five years ago. If, if the incumbent at that time wanted their current market, their current insurance company that was insuring our property, then they were also given that market. So everyone was aware that that's, that's how it was going to be placed. When you assign insurance companies, when they had to submit their form, it was what insurance companies, give us a rank of one, two, three, you know, what, what would be your preference? So of course, if everybody wanted the same one, then we had to go and say, and, and go through an exercise of who gets which insurance company. Because when you're in the insurance market, a company or an underwriter that will provide insurance quotes to you, they won't provide a quote to every one of your companies. They're going to work with one of you. So you can't have any of these companies that want to provide a proposal to us. An insurance or an underwriter will not give five agents a proposal. They're going to work with one. So that's why you have to assign them, so that you don't have possibly one company going in and tying up every market and no one else can get to any of those companies. So that's why they're assigned, so that it can be distributed across, to the different proposers. On February the 4th, the submission deadline, we received one proposal. Two of the proposers did not respond, asked questions, request additional company assignments, or request an extension of the due date. And the proposal that we received was from our current insurance company, which is Boarded. I did think it was important to also note that we've had an increase in our property and contents value from when we started this policy year, May 1st of 19, to current right now. As far as our insured values, we went up from $348,782,788 to $423,129,788. That's a 21% increase in value that we are insuring. And yes, it's, it's the new buildings and, and contents. And we really still haven't added all the contents because some of that equipment and some of that specialized things that are going to go in these buildings have, have not been on, onboard yet. So-
The other side of that story is some other buildings will be taken off, offline too. So there'll be a little bit of mitigation, not to the extent of the growth, not proportional to the growth, but some of that will be reduced.
So I think that, so based on this information, I think that Mr. Rivera did pass out the staff recommendation to you. So the recommendation for property and windstorm insurance is to continue placing our insurance with Boarded Insurance. We do have Mr. Michael Swatner here, representing Boarded Insurance. And I'm going to give you a little bit of history because we are asking, we are recommending actually to change one of the limits in our coverage. So I'm going to kind of go through this recommendation line by line for you. So in May of 2019, our insurance premium was almost 1.2 million. And then it provides the rate, which is per hundred, of value at .338. And at the time of May of last year, I mean, I just quoted the value, our total value, and this is buildings and contents. So this is your building and your contents inside the building, was the almost 349 million. If we renewed currently today, based on our new value of the $423,129,788, that increase we just talked about, which is over $74 million, then our premium at the current rate and our current renewal would be a little over $1.4 million. Okay? So this is a renewal. So our renewal for 2020, for May 1st of 2020, our premium is quoted at 1.6 million. The rate increased, the valuation rate increased from .338 to .384. That is a 14% rate increase. Okay? And like I said, if you do the math, the larger proportion or the 64% of the premium increase is due to the value increases. It's due to all these new buildings we've put online and, and content. So I said, 64% of that premium is directly related to all of the new things we have put on our insurance plan. Okay? Our deductible for named storm is, currently is 1% of damaged property with 150 million limit. So that's, it's capped at 150. Subject to a 2.5 maximum deductible. Deductible for all other, including unnamed wind hail, is $100,000 up to our schedule of values. And the schedule of values right now is at $423 million. There are few exceptions, like one exception would be, that would be capped, would be like fine arts. We're capped at 5 million, so it doesn't go all the way up.
Explain the fine arts.
Fine arts, basically, there's a definition by insurance companies and it would have to be like a work of art.
Yep. Not, not our department.
Not our department.
That's the confusion.
Yeah, not our department. It is actually established as this is an art piece. So it's capped at 5 million. So that, that's an exception to, to when it says schedule of values. It's, so a couple of things do have a cap. If we had wind-driven rain, it's capped at 1 million. That's usually not even covered. Because remember, if we have a storm event, it's over in storm. We've never had, Jessica, I've looked through this and we have not ever had a wind-driven rain claim. So it has, if we've had any wind-driven rain damage, it's been below that 100,000 deductible. Okay? But what we are, and then, and this particular proposal that was submitted, the agent flat fee slash commission at full limit is $40,000. And that $40,000 is included in the premium that I'm quoting to you. But what the staff does recommend is we are recommended to increase and limit, to increase our limit for the named storm from 150 million to 300 million for an additional premium of 262,500. So the renewal was the 1.6. You added the additional, so it would be right at 1,888,837. And the, the reason that we're proposing or recommending the increase is if you look back at our schedule of values, I could find some data back to the early 2000s and we were barely over maybe, thank you, Jessica. Like in 2007, our, our schedule of values was 278 million. And so, and our limit was 150. Prior to that, I know that we had in the early 2000s, we, 2003, 2004, which was one of our bond issuance, we had a lot of other new buildings come online. We've always had that 150 million. We have grown significantly since the early 2000s, but we have never moved that maximum coverage for if we had a storm. So keeping in that mind and knowing that we are on the coast and in hurricane country, we have discussed this and we're recommending to go ahead and, and move that 150 million limit to the 300. Undertain any questions? If you have questions.
Are there questions for Ms. McDonald? Yes, sir.
The rate increase, it looks like the rate went up over 13%?
The rate increased at 14%. What we're seeing in the market right now on the coast is anywhere from 20 to 30% rate increases and ours came in at 14.
Is there a motion to accept staff recommendation of both? Is that a motion to both increase the, the limit for named storm and to award to Boarded Insurance as recommended? Thank you. Is there a second to that motion? Second by Mr. Salinas? Any other questions or comments from board members? Is there public comment on this item? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no. That motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Ms. McDonald.
Thank you.
Thank you all for your hard work.
Thank you.
The next item is related to discussion and possible action regarding an order to annex property within the city of Corpus Christi as of January 1st, 2020. Dr. Escamilla, do you want to introduce this item?
Well, just really quickly, as Ms. Keys is getting ready, she and, and Mr. Rivera have been working diligently along with me on, on the whole topic of annexation. That is a, property annexation has been a really growing topic, if you will, over the last year plus. And we have some specifics with, with, with some new information about how the law addresses annexation in the Delmar College District. There are two pieces that we're going to be talking about here and I think we're going to have some, some public comments as well. But that being said, Ms. Keys is going to kick us off.
Thank you very much. What we're going to do first is to, the proposal today is to annually consider and approve annexation under Texas Education Code, Chapter 130. And so this presentation is focusing on several bullet points. The first is to review the existing college district as of 2019. Next, review the actions taken by the city of Corpus Christi to annex and de-annex property during 2019. And to acknowledge the benefits of annexation to the greater community through in-district tuition, workforce development, and future revenues to the college. Additionally, we recommend that the college annually annex the same territory as the city of Corpus Christi and the ISDs within the district. We're going to acknowledge that the city of Corpus Christi is in the process of de-annexation of tracts owned by Occidental Chemical Company and Occidental Electric Chemical Corporation and Ingleside Electrical Occidental Company, which is not on this slide right here, in San Patricio County. We're going to provide for consistent annexation in an orderly manner for long-range planning. And we're going to establish January 1st of each year as a consistent point in time for annexation as provided in Vernon's Texas Statutes and Codes annotated, Texas Tax Code So we're going to accomplish a lot. This is providing an overview of our existing boundaries and where they came from in chronological, particularly as we look back. Corpus Christi Independent School District actually created us in 1935 through an election and an order for junior college district creation and tax selection. And this was an election, and of course, our beginning as a community college. The city of Corpus Christi established our boundaries in 1983 by an election to annex territory and through an election, and you can see the statement there that was carried by ballot and voted on. And it actually created then, or established our boundaries as those of the city of Corpus Christi. In addition, we have other school districts in which we are, which are becoming part of our taxing district, primarily West Oso, Cal Allen, Telo- of our taxing district, primarily West Oso, Cal Allen, Tullasil Midway, Flower Bluff, and then parts of London. We refer to Texas Education Code, Chapter 130, and we have put it here for your reference point, and it's exactly Section 130.066, which calls for automatic annexation of certain territory. It states, "If the junior college district annexes territory under this subchapter comprising all of the municipality or school district, the governing board by order by annex, for junior college purposes, any territory later annexed by or added to the municipality or school district." And that sums, as we've identified then, where our district lies, within the city of Corpus Christi and with our school districts. This map just demonstrates where we were as a taxing district with, prior to, during 2019. And I did want to point out, because the school districts and the city is labeled on here, however, this right here is actually London ISD, this little tip. And so there is a portion down here that the city had annexed that went into the London Independent School District a few years ago. That and part of this. Mm-hmm. It's right here. These two pieces. And it's just not labeled that way on this map, so I wanted to point that out. This is the chronological order of the main points that the city of Corpus Christi undertook this last year that impact our taxing district. This is a review of the ordinances that are posted on the city website and is public information. On May 21st of 2019, through city ordinance, the city of Corpus Christi annexed what we call La Quinta Corridor and North Side of Corpus Christi Bay, approximately 5,400 acres. On July the 24th, they actually de-annexed portions of the north side of Corpus Christi Bay, which they had originally annexed there on May 21st. And then on July 30th, they annexed what we call, near London ISD area of the London side of town, the Brazelton Home Annexation is what it's referred to. So that was creating properties on the south side of Corpus. And then November the 19th, they de-annexed Vostapien Property, which is, of course, the Vostapien Industries Complex over on Sampet County. And then on December the 10th, they continued to annex property on the south side of town, which is referred to as the Temaz and MPM Development Portions of Land. At this time, we also referring back to another piece of tax code in which we're looking at, which is Vernon's Texas Statutes, which I previously mentioned, was referring to where are we as of January 1st of 2020. And as you can see, things have been progressing throughout the year, especially the last six to seven months, within the city of Corpus Christi. And so we're establishing a fixed date of January 1, according to tax code. These are a few of the steps that we've taken over the last several months. Augie Rivera has been very busy. We've met with legal counsel in Austin and had a review of the Texas Education Code as it related to annexation. We've met with staff from the city of Corpus Christi several times, Nuasis County Appraisal District and San Patricio Appraisal District. We've had meetings with elected officials from Nuasis and San Patricio Counties, and we've met with community and independent school district leaders. This map shows what occurred on May the 21st, back in my listing of the original flow of steps that the city took. And the blown-up map in the corner is representing, this is solely San Patricio County, which is up here too. And it shows the lands that they annexed, which was called North Side Corpus Christi Bay or La Quinta Corridor section. That was on May 21st. Then on December 10th, they came down and annexed down in the south side of Corpus Christi, adding really these two corners right in here and a little bit right here, which was near the London area. After subsequent action that the city may have taken today, we, we assume they took today, and de-annexation of properties that were in the original map from right here, which is Occidental Corporation property primarily, then this is what's proposed that the city of Corpus Christi would still have within their city limits after the action that they take finalizing this de-annexation.
It's in gray.
It's in gray, yes, I'm sorry, I'm showing the, showing what went away today. So the parts that in gray represent the properties in San Patricio County that would be, remain within the city of Corpus Christi after de-annexation, and the portions that are south side of Corpus Christi over here are still left as of today. And what we're recommending in your order placed today, and this is just the primary section that has to do with defining the properties themselves and the action today, and it continues on, there's a listing of legal sections that are on the order itself. I didn't put them on the PowerPoint. But on the order itself, it identifies the properties. And what this does is it creates the boundaries of the Delmar College District to be the same as the city of Corpus Christi after their de-annexation today and the creation of that industrial zone. And so it'd be moving forward with any lands, and it would create this action as of January 1, subject to what actions were taken today to de-annex, and that the city of Corpus Christi. And so it keeps us within lines of the city of Corpus Christi.
Questions, comments from our board? Augie has provided a detailed resolution that was, is actually the action we would take today if the board so chooses to do so.
Before you, before you read the resolution, can I ask? We are mandated to go along with the city as far as annexation, right? So why would it require separate action from us? It's not automatic. We still have to take action?
Just have to take an order.
Okay.
You have, you have to take action and approve an act, an order.
But the reason we're doing it is because the city's doing it, so we're just putting our boundaries with theirs.
Yes, sir.
Other questions, comments? We do have public comment on this item, and then that would allow Mr. Rivera to come back, because you do need to read the ordinance, correct? Do we need to read the ordinance? The resolution, I'm sorry, the resolution?
Yeah, not necessarily. You all have it there, and it's been printed, so.
Okay. We do have public comment from Mr. Rick Ritter.
Good afternoon. My name is Rick Ritter. I'm the plant manager of Occidental Chemicals Ingleside Manufacturing Facility. We do have a concern with this, in part because, you know, we're establishing an industrial district agreement with the city of Corpus Christi that's essentially identical to all of the existing ISDs that exist with like Flynn Hills, Valero, Sitco, all the large industrial entities here in the, in the coastal bend. So our ISD is different in one respect, and that is that the city of Corpus Christi wanted to carve out a 1,000-foot corridor so that they could extend their tax jurisdiction at some point in the future. So we essentially, I mean, we were okay with that. That's, that's, you know, we want to get an industrial district agreement with them, and so we've been working over the past year to, to get this carved out. What I don't think anyone realized was that, you know, Delmar would come back and tax this particular section of property here, because within this, within our ISD, even though it's different in the sense that we're going to have an annexed and a de-annexed section, the city of Corpus Christi never intended to tax us at a different rate. In other words, we're going to be paying the same thing that all of the other ISD entities pay. So even though they were carving this out for purposes of extending their tax jurisdiction, they were going to treat it all the same in terms of the, of the tax rate. So what this has done is, is it's, it's creating an injustice, if you will, or we're going to be taxed potentially different from any of the other large industrial entities here in, in the coastal bend, because we worked with the city to allow them to extend their, their, their tax jurisdiction. So I think what we'd like to do is, is suggest that we sort of just table this whole thing right now, and let's get the, get the Delmar College, the city of Corpus Christi, Oxy. I think we need time to get together and kind of talk through and understand this, and give ourselves an opportunity to try to, you know, work something out here that's fair, because again, we don't feel like we should be taxed at a different rate from any of the other industrial entities here in the, in the coastal bend that have an industrial district agreement with the city of Corpus Christi. This was done at their request, not ours, and it just feels like that, you know, that's not, that's not a good thing. And our understanding is, is that per the law, Delmar does not have to annex this. It's, it's a, it's, you have the right to do it, but the law says you may, so it doesn't mean that you absolutely have to do it. So we would just ask that we have an opportunity to sit down and talk about this more.
Thank you, Mr. Ritter.
At a later date.
Thank you. Mr. Rivera, is this an item that we need to discuss in closed session regarding legal counsel, in order to, to confer with you?
I think that would be helpful.
Okay.
It shouldn't take long, but just to clear a few things up.
Okay. We do not have a pending motion on the floor, so we will table action on this until after we come out of closed session. Are there any other questions or any other public comment regarding this item? Then with that, let me find where my agenda went. There we go. With that, that is going to end our regular session agenda. We are now going to go into closed session under Texas Government Code 551.071, consultation with legal counsel regarding pending or contemplated litigation or legal claims or settlement offer with possible discussion and action in open session, and the seeking of legal advice from counsel on pending or contemplated legal matters or claims, including the matter of Gerald Sansing, also under B, with possible discussion and action in open session. Texas Government Code 551.074A1, regarding the appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment, duties, discipline, or dismissal of a public officer or employee. Texas Government Code 551.087, regarding discussion or deliberation of information received from a business prospect from which the college is conducting economic development negotiations, and/or the deliberation of an offer of financial or other incentive to a business prospect with possible action, discussion, and action in open session. And Texas Government Code 551.074, regarding the deliberation of the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property with possible discussion and action in open session. The time is 2:02 PM. We'll clear the room and have just a very brief reset. All right, the board has come back from closed session at 2:36 PM. Dr. Sherwood, do you have our first motion?
I do. I would like to move that we approve the order annexing the territory as we have in our package, with the striking of, at the end of Section 1 on page 2, the language that says, "On which the district is deferring any action at this time." And then also to include that, that we instruct the staff to continue discussions with Oxy for a possible amendment for a resolution at a future date.
Are there any, is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Second by Dr. Adami. Any other questions or comments from the board at this time? All those in favor, please say, I'm sorry. I had asked for public comments on the action item earlier. Do I need to ask for it again? On the motion, are there any public comments on the motion? Seeing none? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, please say no. That motion passes unanimously. And we have a second motion coming out of closed session.
Yes, Madam Chair. In the matter of Gerald Sansing, I move that we approve the terms of the separation agreement as outlined by counsel in closed session, and further authorize administration to execute the necessary and appropriate documentation.
Is there a second to that motion?
I see.
Second by Ms. Estrada. Any questions or discussion by the board? Any public comment on that item? Mr. Bennett will be abstaining from this, from action on this item. Everyone else, or any, all those in favor of this motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, please say no. That motion carries with one abstention. Next item on our agenda is the calendaring, and as Dr. Eskamia mentioned, we will see a rescheduling of events through April at least. So you'll get some indication from Natalie or from Delia on the rescheduling of those activities. At this point in time, we have a scheduled meeting on April 14th, and we will notify you in advance of whether that meeting is going to be held in person or via teleconference or video conference, and we'll have some, some further indication of that in the future. Anything else for the good of the cause? If not, then our meeting is adjourned at 2:39 PM. Thank you all.